To call the regular meeting of the East Central Independent Board of Trustees to order. Esperantos, which you call the role please.
Yes, Sir Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller.
Here.
Victor Garza.
Yep.
James Mulkey.
Here.
John Massengo.
Here.
Mr. Bryant, we have a forum.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, Prayer and Pledge, Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir, Miss Lewis.
So tall. Good morning, Mr. President, Superintendent, Mr. Toscano, all of the board members and everybody here. Just say good morning because it is not the morning. It is the afternoon, the evening. I'm sorry, I got a little bit of a cold, so you know, you have to take a little bit of medicine. But, good evening, we're very excited to be here tonight, especially for this moment. This day, it is, well, month, it's the Board Appreciation Month, so we're very excited to be here on today. So, with us, we have a few wonderful people. I want to introduce to you our eighth grade avid student, Kevin Vasquez, and he's gonna lead us in our pledge.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... their hearts and minds. Give them your love, wisdom, and guidance. Now, Lord, please bless our school board members, superintendent, principals, school leaders, and all of our teachers, staff, and students. All of this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, you may be seated. With us this evening, we have four brave souls from our sixth grade women's choir. I'm just going to introduce our choir director, Mr. Chuck Pinella, and something special about him that we just found out, he has the opportunity next week to sing the background vocals for Barry Manilow, so... He is going to revamp our program and we're excited that we have someone like that who is leading. So, Mr. Pinella, you can go ahead and introduce our women's choir.
Alright, thank you so much. This is a select four group girls. Come on over here, ladies. They're being really brave today, so. This is a selection that we did for our fall program, and normally we have thirty-four girls, so they're being really brave. The selection we're doing is called Fairness Ladies by Nick Page, and Nick Page is a music educator over in Massachusetts who has some ties with also our teacher, Ms. Cool.
I know that it is not easy to stand up in front of people and do that, so I'm gonna say you are some of our fairest and finest ladies. Thank you very much. Can we please have any parents that are here in the audience, please stand and be recognized at this time? For all of your hard work, we really appreciate it, and that's all that we have for tonight. We have a nice token of our appreciation for you, for everything that you do, the countless hours that you spend. We know it's just not this time that we see you, but we are so appreciative for everything that you do.
So, you make sure you got the right.
Y'all did a great job.
Thank you.
Put out your refrigerator.
Refrigerator.
Little belated birthday gift for you?
No.
Hey, John, you can help me on the fridge if you want.
I'm already taken.
That's right, sorry. How dare I upset my customers?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all did a fantastic job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for getting our meeting started. That's quite a talented group of young folks that you brought here tonight to get us going. And I noticed that they didn't even bother to hang around and get their applause, they just boom, right back to their chairs. So, I'm sure that that's gonna change pretty soon also. Y'all did an amazing job tonight, thank you very much. We're gonna take a short break now, so that those of you who need to go home and do homework can go home and do homework, and those of you who might need to go home and grade homework can go home and grade homework. And then we'll get back started with our meeting again. So, let's take about ten minutes and tell everybody thank you, and then we'll come back up and get started. And recommendations, recognitions, Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir, Mr. President, we do have some awards and recognitions tonight, and so for those, I would like to ask Ms. Ashley Colas to come on up to the podium.
Good evening, President Bryant, trustees. We're so glad that y'all are all here tonight, since January is Board Recognition Month. And I did notice how you sent everyone home before Board Recognition. We'll talk later. Like you like to say, right, right. Yes, sir, okay. Will y'all please come on down? Come on down. All of you, come on down. Yes, please stand in the order that you sit. Mama Margaret said, "Stand in the order you sit."
Single file?
Single file, that's right, all that. I want you to go stand over there and smile for pictures. Anywhere you want, sir. As a community, we would like to thank you, our school board trustees, for devoting your time to support public education and serving our students, teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, maintenance, and cafeteria workers. Trustees face complex and demanding challenges, yet few people understand the scope and far-reaching implications of their responsibilities. They truly make a difference every day. Their job is to establish a vision for our education program, create policies to achieve that vision, assure schools are accountable to the community, and strongly advocate for continuous improvement in student learning. Our trustees are responsible for an annual budget of about a hundred and seventy-three million dollars, responsible for ten thousand two hundred students, fourteen hundred employees, and twelve campuses. Their voices represent a community of more than fifty thousand citizens. Even though we are making a special effort in January, which is Board Appreciation Month, to show appreciation to our board members, we realize that their many contributions reflect a year-round commitment. Their job entails evening meetings and school functions to attend, reports and agendas and proposals and other information to read and study, their own continuing education as well, and a host of difficult decisions to make. Yet, our trustees make it look easy. Maybe it's because between them, they have a combined total of seventy years invested in serving on this board. Seventy years. Seven-zero. Our trustees generously give of themselves to ensure that decisions directly affecting our schools are made by representatives of this community. In these challenging times for public education, their ultimate goal is always focused on the future success of the children in our district. We applaud them for their willingness to serve as advocates for our children and the voice of public education. Thank you. We have a little token of appreciation, if you'll... The cups are filled with Hershey's Hugs and Kisses, and we thank you. Thank you. Will any family members, I know that we have family members in the audience, but will our family members, our trustees' family members, please stand up and be recognized as well? Yes. That's right. So, thank you, we appreciate you, everything that you do, all the time. We are very appreciative.
Hey, John.
Yeah.
Did I get your name right on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Well, thank you so much for that. And, Ms. Colas, thank you so much for not making us put ourselves in alphabetical order. And yes, we'll talk. Alright, public comments. Do we have anyone? No one signed up for public comments, alright. Thank you, ma'am. Item five, public hearing for Texas Academic Performance Report.
Trustees, in your electronic packet, you can see this year's annual taper report, beginning on page nine, and it runs through page seventy. In that report, you'll see information about student performance, district profile information, as well as an annual report that includes P E M's financial standards reports, which we've discussed our first rating for this year already. You also see a report on violent criminal incidents reported in our district. And then lastly, some information from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. At this time, I'd like to call Jonathan up to give the board just a really brief overview or synopsis of what you'll see in the report.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Toscano, and members of the board. Now, I've heard you talk a couple of times about giving this accountability system its appropriate time and attention, and so I want to make sure I do that today. So, I've got a few slides for you. This is our overview of the four indexes. The state of Texas was determined to try to make a simple and easy-to-understand system that we're still looking through all the archaic components of it and trying to digest them. But Index One is really about student achievement, and we scored a sixty. Each of these is a score from one to one hundred, but some of those scores are more theoretical. Like, it's not very possible to reach a score of one hundred on any of them. So, a score of twenty-two on Index Two for our progress, where, I'm sorry, we scored a thirty-two, and we needed a twenty-two to meet the target there. So, you can see that on each of these four indexes, we've exceeded the standard set by the state for closing the performance gap, which is really a measure of our low socioeconomic and minority populations. We exceeded that by about four points. And then our strength there was on post-secondary readiness, where we had a seventy-five, where a sixty was our minimum score. And that's largely based on our really strong graduation rate, which I think you'll see in a couple of slides. To highlight a couple more things, we have attendance rate just under ninety-five percent for the district. Our dual-credit enrollment rate is a little above the state average at fifty-five percent. We have about one in five students participate in A P. And look at our career in tech, our C T E, coherent sequence. That's students participating in multiple C T E classes over their high school career. And so, that's over seventy percent. It just continues to kind of grow and get stronger every year. And then you can see that's more than twenty percent, almost twenty-five percent higher than the state average. That's a real strength. And that the state characterizes what they call college and career-ready for students, and we're about ten or eleven percent ahead of the state average there. Looking at graduation rates, it's another area where East Central is noticeably above the region and the state average. You can see we're about four percent, three to four percent, depending on how they calculate it. They calculate it by a four-year cohort and a five-year cohort, and they look at multiple classes. And no matter how you do that, we're ahead, and then the region lags behind the state a little bit. But again, East Central is ahead of that mark. Our dropout rate for seventh and eighth graders is significantly lower than last year, at about two-tenths of a percent, which is about half of what Region Twenty or the state have. And our dropout rate for high school students is a little under two percent, which is a little bit better than the region and state dropout rate. Looking at students who enroll in Texas institutions of higher education, we're sitting a little under fifty percent there. And some reports that you've seen previously but are part of this requirement from the state is we do have a first rating that's A-superior. Our accreditation status is that we are accredited, and as a district, we met the standard. The only other option there is improvement required. And any questions?
You had the C T E coherent.
Yes.
C T E stands as A C N A M, or is it...
I'm sorry, it's a career in technology.
Technology, okay.
It's, it had been known as KATE before, and sorry, we hit in our education jargon. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to make that clear.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Do I have a comment? That was a great report, by the way.
Yeah.
Gave it appropriate time.
Thank you.
One of the things that we always see with these state assessments is that they don't capture everything. Because I noticed one of the categories was the number of students or the percent of students enrolled in Texas higher education. So, it means that my student that graduated a couple of years ago took us down a peg because unfortunately, he went to Arizona to school. So, we're not counting all of our kids that go everywhere. And that's unfortunately, one of the big problems, just one, with the state assessments. So, anyway, thank you for a very appropriate report, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Does anyone else wish to comment on the Texas Academic Performance Report? Having no one come forward, we will move to Agenda Item Six, Superintendent's Reports.
Trustees, first report today is the Personnel Report. In your packet, beginning on page seventy-two, you'll see last month's activity. And while there's minimal activity, there's some activity that I want to make mention, one of which is a to college and beyond, school-based site coordinator. We've actually added three of those positions in the district as a result of a grant, the Texas Gear Up Grant. You've heard us talk about that in the past year, and basically, it's a partnership with the University of Texas that is going to take students from seventh grade as a cohort, and for seven years, give them the support and the resources to challenge advanced academics and get them to college and hopefully through college. And so, it's a partnership between University of Texas and Texas Instruments. It's a very competitive grant, and our district was awarded that seven-year grant, and so this staff comes with it. And there's one person there because the other two employees were internal, already candidates. So, we filled those positions, and they're busy at work. We have three of them that serve the high school, I'm sorry, heritage and legacy, three of them. So, two, one at each site, and then one splits between the two. You'll also see some dual-language teachers. I just wanted to remind the board that dual-language is a high-need area to fill, and we look for those teachers year-round. We don't wait until we have available positions. We actively recruit and search for the finest across the state. And when we find them, we bring them on board, and our idea was that we would over-hire. And despite those efforts to do that in recent years, we've never over-hired. We actually end up placing them as soon as we hire them. So, this is an effort to continue to do that, and you'll see in these cases, while we were thinking we were over-hiring, we actually placed both of those teachers. So, just wanted to mention that to the board. Also, in your miscellaneous packet, January, February calendar, just a couple of dates that I wanted to point out. District leadership staff will be at the Midwinter Conference in Austin from the twenty-eighth through the thirty-first of January. Then in February, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the fifteenth at six-thirty. We do have a couple of holidays in February. One is on Friday, the second, which is a student holiday, but a staff training day. And then on the nineteenth of February, same thing, another student holiday and a staff development training day. Also, a couple of other things that I wanted to point out in your miscellaneous packet. You'll all have a copy of a document titled Senate Bill fifteen-sixty-six. It's required school board training. As a result of the last legislative session, there was a state law requiring board trustees to receive training specifically in the area of roles and responsibilities in evaluating student academic performance. And so, I just wanted the board to have that on their radar. The rules around that just came out, so the regional service center is kind of scrambling to provide options for trustees. Trustees can have that training individually, or we can choose to do that as a team, which would also then double as team-building to meet that requirement as well. So, what we're going to try and do is assemble a team training around this Senate bill and hopefully have that done here in the district. So, as things develop, I'll keep you guys posted. And ideally, again, we would train as a team here in the district, and if there was any one or more of you that couldn't attend, you could always attend individually as well. So, just wanted you to be on, have that on your radar, but also be aware that that's a state law, and it's a requirement for us to have that training. Also, wanted to just make the board aware of a program that the district undertook in partnership with a company called Germ Blast. You may have seen when you went into the curriculum building, a label on the door that said, "It's been treated by Germ Blast." Germ Blast is a company that uses several different processes and procedures to eliminate all kinds of bacteria and viruses in a very comprehensive, thorough way. We have a, what we believe to be a very comprehensive, thorough cleaning and disinfecting program through our custodial program. But we've been looking for a solution for enriching that and supplementing that program. We came across Germ Blast earlier this year and did a little research and decided to partner with them over the Christmas break. They hit every single building, every single school, every single piece of furniture, every single bus, and every single bus seat. And in a time when I think, you know, flu is probably as bad as it's ever been, just wanted to make the board aware that we feel like we did a really good thing for our staff, students, across the district. And so, if you see that label, Germ Blast, you know that all the bugs are gone, at least for now. Part of the program also includes them coming back out, swabbing and testing all different areas to ensure the effect. And they'll come back in and re-treat if there continues to be issues with viruses and bacteria in those areas. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Toscano, on that Tuesday, will we make that day up, the holidays?
Oh, yeah, thank you for asking. And in fact, because of the requirement now of instructional minutes as opposed to days, and our school schedules having some allowances, we have extra minutes in our school calendar. We actually won't have to make that day up, provided we don't have any other days like that. But I do want to call the board's attention to a matter that we'll be bringing back to you as a result. Normally, in these cases, we'd have to make the day up, and for staff who don't get paid unless they're at work, it kind of would work itself out in the past because we would make that day up. Because of the possibility here, we won't make that day up, we've got auxiliary and operations staff that stand to lose a day's pay. So, purple board policy, the board has the opportunity to consider that, an option to pay that staff for missing that day under those conditions. And if you'll recall, during Hurricane Harvey, we had to send staff home early for their safety. We brought a similar situation to the board, and you guys made the decision to pay that staff so that they wouldn't lose that time, the pay associated with that time due to conditions that they could not control and we could not control. So, we'll be bringing that to you next month for your consideration as well. Sir?
Anything else? Alright, moving on to Item Seven-A, Approval of Pecan Valley Elementary Turnaround Plan and a Board Resolution.
Trustees, we'll bring Jonathan Holbert back up to the podium at this time. Very popular guy this evening. This is something that's required by statute, and Jonathan's gonna give you guys an overview of what it's about, and certainly, we'll make sure that we comply with what's required as well. So, Mr. Holbert?
Thank you for another opportunity to speak. Now, given an opportunity to speak about Pecan Valley, what I'd really like to tell you about is some of the amazing things that are happening there. So, for example, Ms. Wurzbach and I are part of a Leadership Transformation Group at Region Twenty. And at a recent meeting over there, Ms. Wurzbach was talking with the group, and they were so impressed that the presenter actually sat down in the audience, and Ms. Wurzbach connected and had her computer, and she was presenting to the whole group for about thirty minutes, sharing all the wonderful things that are going on at P V. And the presenter was so impressed, she came out to the campus and spent a full day at Pecan Valley and was looking at how they interact with teams, the P L C work that they do, some of the great things that are going on, how well-run the school is, how smooth things are. Now, that's what I'd like to be telling you about, but that's not what's on the agenda today, so I'm gonna tell you about the turnaround plan, so...
Seems like you've already told us what the turnaround plan is. And that it's working.
Yes, sir, that is a coincidence, isn't it? So, now, a turnaround plan is a requirement for us to work on this plan in the event that a campus that is in their second year of being rated I R, if they are rated I R again this year, then they have to have this plan in place. And so, it's basically a document that we have that says, "These are the things that we're gonna do." Now, if they don't get rated I R, they don't have to enact this. So, but we are required over the next two years to do these steps if we do have that rating. So, now, we... So now, we need a board approval, there's a resolution there. And there are a couple of highlights I just want to briefly call your attention to, just in case you had any questions. So one of the things, it talks about involvement, and so you'll see that she's had numerous opportunities to talk with parents throughout the fall. You may recall, her Targeted Improvement Plan also had parent involvement in it. She had a, a meeting with Sitebase scheduled, but it was at ICE Day. But being Ms. Wurzbach, the way she operates, she, she actually reached out to every member of Sitebase just to make sure she got input from them. So all the community members, teachers, and everybody that's part of it. And then we also posted the plan on the website. So that was posted in the middle of December, more than thirty days before this meeting, just to solicit any input from, from the community or anybody that, that wanted to kind of give, give input. And so we also reached out to our Region Twenty Representative, Leslie Thompson, who, who does school improvement work, and she's read it over and said, "Yes, you're on the right track." And of course, our PSP, our professional service provider, if you're not up on all the education jargon, she, she Sylvia, Dr. Sylvia Reyna, who was Assistant Superintendent in a couple districts, she's read it over and was part of the creation of the plan. And then just to highlight a couple of things from the plan briefly, they've really narrowed the focus from, from kind of more inclusive of reading and math to more focused on reading. They've looked at the achievement, and the students in math at Pecan Valley have been kind of hitting an all-time high right now. And so they think that reading is really where they want to focus more of their time and attention than on both of them. But they also want to expand their, their, their work in a way. So what, what they've done is they've really focused on teachers and how they plan and how they work. But they want to expand that to how the school does the work and how it interacts with parents and community. So they really want to partner so that we're all working together in order to get the best outcome possible. And they think that by focusing on reading that they can, they can kind of accelerate that work. And so I'll, I'll turn it over to see if you have any questions or anything I can expand on for you.
Anyone have any questions? So I've, I've mentioned this before, that years and years ago, we had a rather myopic focus on reading and everything else kind of went to heck in a handbasket. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of math, reading that you can do. But in the industry that I spend most of my time in, math and, and science and technology seem to be a very important part of that. So while I applaud the focus on reading, we really shouldn't forget about any of the other things. Now, my second, more of a question than a statement, is are we going to be expanding this same type of process to the rest of the campuses? If it can take a campus from needs improvement to not needing improvement, can it take a campus from doing really great to doing exceptionally well? So what, what are the plans for expanding this throughout the district?
You want to talk about CCG again, just for a moment?
So, so as, as the state knows the process, they call it the TACE process. We, we had been pronouncing it Taze, but they've, they've clarified the important things like how to pronounce the process for us. But it's really based on research of kind of how, how the process works. I was sharing over the break with you that it's very similar to the development of the community, Community Accountability System, where you're really kind of partnering with people, looking at all the information we can get, making the best plan possible, right? Once we've got this plan, we're, we're articulating it to the community, making very clear, we're saying, "This is what we're trying to accomplish, and these are the steps we think we're going to do." Along the way, you continually reflect on it, and you say, "How are we doing?" And if it's not working the way we want it to, what adjustments do we want to make? And so we first experienced that with Harmony, if you recall, about five years ago. They briefly had a rating of improvement required, which we appealed and we won the appeal. But in the process, we learned about this, and we said, "Oh, my gosh, this really has a potential to have a positive effect." And so we started saying, "What if we tried this out with more people?" Kind of like you said, improvement's not for people who are struggling, it's for everybody. Everybody can, can look at where they are and say, "Gosh, I can improve more and I can, I can get better outcomes, whether you're the best school or the worst school in, in, in the country," right? So every campus in our, in our district goes through what we call the CCG process, which is based on that process. So we've tried to reduce some of the administrivia to it, and try to reduce kind of the paperwork, and you got to submit this stuff to TEA, and you got to do this board report. But we tried to emphasize the, the work in saying, "How can we be really clear and have outcomes that we, you know, we were trying to accomplish?" And, and having clarity and communicating that to the community, and communicating that to our teachers, and trying to continually improving it better. So we're, we're constantly looking at that and saying, "How can we make that better and smoother and more effective?" But I don't see us taking major components from this turnaround aspect of it. But certainly, the other process and just anything that we can do that causes, you know, better outcomes. I, I often say it's magical to me that adults can sit around and improve outcomes for kids. I mean, I just, some days I'm just marvel at my job, I love my job, I love my work, and I love that, you know, I can sit around. Today, I got to work with lots of campus and district administrators, and the, the possibility that the work we were doing could possibly impact kids like that, that gets me out of bed in the morning. I mean, that's exciting to me. So I hope that answers the...
Yeah, it's more about the process and moving the process to different places. It's just like school districts are unique, campuses are unique, and you can't take what works at one to the next one, but you can certainly take that process to the next one and infuse that into what they do on that campus that makes that campus great. Okay, all right, cool, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. So just to clarify, CCG is Continuous Campus Growth. We use the same model for the district, Continuous District Growth. And so all the principals in the room and their campuses for the last four or five years, and we've kind of improved the process along the way. But it's a year-long, ongoing, continuous process that is based on everything Jonathan just said, with all the, all the players in the room who, who represent that school. And so we think we're getting really good at it. And we think that it's a mechanism to help us continuously get better at what we're doing for staff, ultimately for students in the community through all of our schools, every school.
All right, I think we're ready for your recommendation.
Mr. President, Trustees, I recommend board approval of the Pecan Valley Elementary Turnaround Plan and Board Resolution as presented.
Recommendation from the Superintendent to improve the, to approve the Pecan Valley Elementary Turnaround Plan as presented. Chair'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Feller, is there a second? We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions, any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Community-Based Accountability System.
Trustees, in your miscellaneous packet, you have several items. The first of which I wanted to point to is the packet titled ECISD Community-Based Accountability Efforts. On page fifteen, I just wanted you to see the timeline. You're very familiar with this effort. Just to kind of remind the board, the board's desire was to move beyond only relying on state accountability as an indicator of quality and an indicator of improvement opportunities, but to create something that was a little more robust and a little more connected to the community's wishes for its schools. And so we began with a process in June where ultimately, we ended up bringing a group of staff and students and community partners and trustees, all in all, who met for the better part of the fall. That work was facilitated by a consultant named John Tanner, who is considered widely across the nation as an expert in the area of assessment and particularly accountability. And he's helped us get to the point where we've designed what we believe is a true reflection of what the community expects for us to accomplish. And so tonight, as promised, we're here to present the board with our initial effort to begin a community-based accountability system. And so I just want to emphasize that this is our initial effort. It's not complete or comprehensive. It's just something that will be ongoing and continuous, and we'll be coming back to the board with contin, additional recommendations as they get developed and as we begin to implement. And so to, to give the board an overview of what we would like for you to consider tonight, I'd like for Taffy Hertz to come up and share with the board the components of this system.
I'm not quite as tall as the other people ahead of me. Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and members of the board. If you'll take a look behind you, first of all, I just want to say I'm so excited to be bringing this to you tonight. We've been working on this for quite a few months now, and so I think we really have a good, a good product to show you. Okay, so this first slide here, and you do have it in your packet. So this is the, the change engine, and it actually is, is very similar to what Jonathan was just talking about in our CCG process. So this is kind of the whole change process here that we would be following. So you'll notice we have the pillar function, which is kind of an overall category, I would say. And then the sub-pillars are some, it breaks down that category into some smaller pieces. So those are the things that we would, we'll be asking you to adopt tonight. So within each pillar and sub-pillars, there are some key questions. And where those key questions came from was from this committee that met with community members, school people, students, all the people that Mr. Toscano just mentioned. And the key questions could change. Any question could come up regarding the pillars and sub-pillars that we might want to be able to answer. So you do have some key questions in your packet that have been developed so far by the committee, but those, those could change. We could be adding to them, we could decide some of those maybe aren't relevant anymore. So the key questions are where we would get our accounting. We would provide an accounting of those key questions, we would answer those key questions. And from that, we would have some findings. And the findings are the things that would need to be addressed. Based on the accounting, what things would we need to address? From that, we would plan the change. We would create our plan for making a difference on whatever our findings were based on the accountings. And then we would implement and then review the evidence. And you'll see there's, the arrows go two different ways between implementation and evidence review, because we'll implement, then we'll look at the evidence, and then we'll make some changes, go back and implement, and then look at the evidence. And then that goes back to then, again, looking at the key questions, and then the whole process starts again. So this graphic actually was developed by T-PAC, the, the Texas Public Accounting Consortium that our district has been part of for getting close to a year now. And so this is, this has been adopted by that group. And so we've also adopted it, would like to adopt it as part of our process that we would follow as part of our community-based accountability system. If you look on page six in the packet that Mr. Toscano was referring to, there's a section called "How a Community-Based Accountability System Works", and it just kind of lists out those steps that I just talked about, how you would follow through this change process. All right, another handout you do have in your packet. You had a one-page attachment in your electronic packet, but between then and the last few days, we've made some kind of tweaking on the wording on these. So you do have another hard copy of the three pillars that we're going to be asking you to adopt tonight. So if you want to take a look at that, it's not very much different from what was in your electronic packet, just a little bit of tweaking on some of the wording. So the, the first pillar that the committee worked on, and in that special meeting at the end of November, we talked about this a little bit, the post-secondary readiness pillar. So the function of that pillar is ECISD schools will prepare ECISD students for citizenship, gainful employment, and success in future studies. Ensure students are real-world ready. So all of the key questions will be geared towards how, how will we know if, if we were meeting that? And then, of course, under there, you see what the sub-pillars are for that, for that particular pillar. Readiness to Make a Meaningful Living, Post-Secondary Planning and Execution, Readiness for Citizenship and Civic Duty, Readiness for College, Career, and/or Military. We actually, the last time the committee met, did some tweaking to that one, we added the, the military part to that. And also, Closing Gaps, All Means All. So when the committee met in December, they did make some changes, a little bit to some of the wording here from what you saw at the end of November when we met. And then as you can see, there's that change engine next to it. The second pillar we'd like for you to look at is Quality and Commitment of Staff. ECISD leadership will ensure the highest-quality workforce to provide the best possible student outcomes for the East Central community. That function also has been tweaked just a little bit since when we had that last meeting. We revised the wording just a little bit. And we also changed up the sub-pillars just a little bit since the last time you saw them, where it focuses on staff, we didn't differentiate between teachers and staff. So you'll notice in the sub-pillars there, it's all, it's talking about just staff. Staff impact, character, staff training, staff empowerment. We did have relational capacity there, we changed that up to capacity of staff to relate to student needs, and then also making sure our staff is qualified. And again, you see the change engine, engine next to it. And then the third one that we would like for you to consider tonight is Student Safety and Well-being. This one wasn't quite as developed the last time we talked about this, and since we, the committee met, we've, we've finished that up, we've polished it up a little bit. We didn't have the function written yet last time we brought this to you, so we now have it. So it is, "Each ECISD campus will provide an environment that ensures students feel accepted, safe, and supported emotionally and physically." Sub-pillars of that would be physical, students' physical well-being, their social, emotional well-being, making sure the staff is trained and students are educated, and also what support services do we offer our staff, students, and families? And again, the change engine is next to that. So again, we would, what we're bringing tonight for adoption, hopefully, are the pillars, the sub-pillars, and the change engine. The other portions of it are, could be ever-changing. Key questions are not, we're not going to adopt those because we could be adding to them. That way, we can change them along the way. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
I just have one, one question. Under the Support Services for Staff, Students, and, and Families, and I know whenever there's a situation or whatever, we have counselors and they, they go out and they, and, and I know the staff and the students. But I was just curious about families. If there's a situation, is there an identifier for a, maybe a, a member of a family that's not dealing well with the situ? Or how, how, what does that look like in terms of families? Is it just general, or is it available if that family member or person needs that? And how do we connect with that? I was just curious.
Our counselors have information to share with families where they can get some external services. Not always necessarily, our staff would provide those services, but we do have information for families on where they can get help.
So I think one of the, one of the examples that we used about that was, unfortunately, the student that we had that was in the automobile accident who passed away. Family needs some help. We, we know about that, and so we can certainly refer them to people. So that, that was kind of where the families came into it. And it became important, and it became much more recognizable as we remind ourselves all the time that this is the East Central family.
Right, exactly, that was my point, yeah.
It's exactly what you were talking about.
They, they, they know that, the, the people that are moving new into our district that may not know the, I was just curious.
And part of this is the whole communication plan. So these are the things that the committee felt were important to the community. Well, part of what we need to do is be able to communicate this out to the community.
You know, we might have discussed that at a workshop, but how are we going to monitor when the kids graduate that they're making a meaningful living? Did we discuss that?
Yes, and, and that can be a challenge. So we have partnered with an organization that has been able to pull some information for us. I don't know to what extent we'll be able to find out, you know, what everyone is doing five years from now. But there are some sources we can pull from to get some information. The Ray Marshall Center is one place that we have partnered with, that they've been able to pull some information from us, either through surveys or looking through information the Texas Higher Ed Coordinating Board has. There's a thing called the National Student Clearing House that keeps track of some of that. So it is difficult, but there is some information we're able to pull.
Yeah, right, and they'll, they'll give that feedback to the district.
Yes.
So Ms. Brazil, trustees, if you look at page fourteen, just as a fore example of how this can be powerful for us, and it'll get to your question as well, Mr. Moke, a little bit. On page fourteen in the packet we've been looking at, Section D refers to Support Services for Staff, Students, and Families. That's sub pillar, Ms. Brazil. And the committee, just as a starter, came up with these seven key questions, right? And so one of those is what emergency supports are available at times of crisis or following a crisis? And so in an effort for the district to have an accounting of the degree to which we do those things, we have to explore internally what supports are available. And are they comprehensive? Are they well-communicated, outward-facing to the community? Can we respond in timely ways to different types of crises? Do we have enough systems in place or, or community partnerships? And so based on trying to answer those questions, we can report to the board, in essence, the community, in that particular area, maybe there's some opportunities. So a finding might be that that might be an area that we might be able to improve. We might find in the area of post-secondary or gainfully employed, that when we tried to answer those questions, to what degree are we creating those conditions for kids? Maybe there's some, some data that we can't access. That maybe one of the findings is, we're really going to look at, we're really going to have to see about exploring the Texas Workforce Commission and look at their databases and see if there's a way to get more information. Or maybe that's not important to us because we, we found out that when we looked at all the certifications kids acquired before they graduated, that they're employable, and maybe that's satisfying enough to the board or community in answering that question. But we don't know. That's why we don't adopt the questions, because they direct our work. But more questions come up as you get into that work, because our whole effort is to provide a complete accounting, not a narrow partial, but a complete accounting to the community at the, to, to, to the degree to which we are fulfilling this expectation, this vision for the pillar. And the idea is, it's not good or bad. It's where are our opportunities so that we can prioritize them as a board and give us our marching orders so that we can create a plan, execute a plan, monitor the implementation of that plan, and ensure that it's having the desired effect? And so I think what we've all begun to realize in this work is it's so much more meaningful, it's so much more comprehensive than a report that is very narrowly measuring math and reading scores for some grade levels. Like, like this gives us information about meaningful change that we can make to continuously improve. And so that's why we're really excited about it. We know you're really excited about it, and, and there's several pillars that can still be developed. And so that work is, is intended to continue moving forward. We also feel like with your approval tonight, that we can put this in the hands of principals and their CCGs and begin to incorporate the, this information, not just state accountability standardized test score information, but this information to ensure that we're really considering what the community wants when we're deciding about the decisions we want to make in improving our schools and ultimately the outcomes for our students. So the language that John Tanner helped us understand is that this begins to re-establish a, a-
Social contract?
Social contract between a community and its schools. And a social contract is basically saying, what can you expect from us? What can we expect from you? Right? And so this is what this is establishing. And that has to be done locally, right? You can't have the state and the legislature say, this is what you're accountable for in East Central ISD. You're accountable to legislatures and policymakers for high and rising test scores in math and reading in some grade levels. But what we should be saying is we're accountable to our constituents here in this community for the things they say they value. And that's what this gives us the opportunity to do for the first time.
So I think one of the things that, what you brought up, James, was, was talked about extensively. And realistically, we, we, we don't have much of a way to measure whether our kids are making a meaningful living after they leave. All we can really say is, are we giving them the tools to do that? Or do we have the tools that they can take advantage of? And measure how many of them are taking advantage of that? And if there aren't enough of them taking advantage of those tools, now we got to figure out how to get more of them to take advantage of that. You know, in and of itself, a certification doesn't mean anything in the outside world. If you're a great test taker, you can get that certification. It doesn't mean you can do the work. So, you know, it's, it's, it's one of the, one of the things that you have to be very careful about when you formulate those metrics, is that you don't box yourself in by trying to answer a question that you can't get information on.
So one last point I'll make is, this committee was driven by not what we want to measure, but what is it that we want to accomplish? And they're very different, because when you're clear about what you want to accomplish, then you go about trying to figure out if we are. And state accountability is about what do you want to measure? And that creates all kinds of different outcomes when you focus on that and different kinds of behaviors in a school. You know, test prep, narrow curriculum, high stakes, high anxiety, no relevant learning outcomes, certainly disconnected from its community values. And that's not what this board has been about as long as I've been in the district and all of us have been in the district. So we're very, very excited about this next step.
Well, I am too, and I'm especially, thank you for pointing this page out. And as you well know, you've given me information in the past that I've taken to various community meetings and things that I've been in outside of the school district. And, and there are other communities that are very concerned about what children are learning, what they're exposed to, what helps and supports, and all of those kinds of things. And I, I can't wait to say, well, let me tell you about what goes on in our schools and, and the things that we have available and, and the way we partner and those kinds of things. So these are conversations I'm sure everybody needs to have, not just in our district, but because we're looking at what the society is going to look like in the coming years. So I'm very excited about it. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
Thank you. Trustees, I recommend board approval of the Community-Based Accountability System, including the pillars and sub pillars, as well as the change engine that were presented this evening.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the Community-Based Accountability System as presented. Chair will entertain a motion.
They'll move.
We have a motion by Ms. Brazil, and we have a second by Mr. Feller. Any other questions, comments? Not? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Consider and Take Possible Action for Proposed Attendance Boundary Zone Changes Effective 2018-2019 School Year.
Trustees, as the board discussed at the special meeting on November twenty-eighth regarding school boundaries, staff did take to the community the preliminary proposals for the school boundary adjustments with Tradition Elementary opening in the eighteen-nineteen school year. We did hold community meetings prior to the break at John Glenn, Oak Crest, Sinclair, and Pecan Valley. And then after the break, we had another meeting at Legacy Middle School. We also brought the Council of PTA Presidents representing all the schools in the district and also presented the proposed boundary adjustments, all of which were intended to gather feedback from the community. By and large, I'm happy to report that the community was very pleased with the time and effort and consideration in the decisions that were made in those proposals. They felt like the board did a really good job in the proposal of considering capacity, needs into the future, proximity in many cases, as well as reconsideration of some of the neighborhoods that were zoned into some schools that perhaps weren't as proximal. And so with all of that, what we're bringing to you tonight is, in essence, the same proposals that you sent us out to the community with. And I think that one other point that was very important to clarify to the community was, would there be options in the event that a family wanted their child to be grandfathered so that they didn't need to transition schools because they'd been previously in a school? We expressed to them that the board was very interested in grandfathering students, but that we do have an intra-district transfer policy in place, a procedure in place. The committee would review those, and where grandfathers, grandfathering situations were requested, that, that we would consider and in most cases approve those. There were very few, but a couple of instances where families also felt like it, they were as close to the, to the, to the school they would be attending as they were to the school that they would have been attending, but were zoned to the, to the new school and felt like that they may be interested in providing their own transportation and going to the, the previous school, not the new school. And would there be consideration? Again, we, we, we let the community know, both through frequently asked questions on the website and in our community meetings, as well as in responses to our website, Talk2Us, feedback outlet, that we do have an intra-district transfer policy and that our intention is to, to give consideration to every request. And should there be space, and should parents be willing to provide transportation, then on an annual basis, we would make every effort to accommodate every request. And so I just wanted to disclose that openly to the trustees, that, that, that's what we communicated. I felt like that was consistent with your wishes, and it was very well received in the community. And so I think that the approval rating in, in, in staff, we divided and conquered in those presentations was very high. And so the presentation is there. You've seen it before. On the last page, the presentation is a summary on page one oh three in your electronic packet, if you wanted to take a look at that once more. But just to kind of recap, you know, we're, we're looking at Oak Crest moving from a intermediate campus four-five to a pre-K to five for the fall. We're looking at the Tradition School Boundaries being north of eighty-seven, John Glenn's Boundaries, right? With a small portion of current Sinclair Boundaries, you know, east of Foster Road through Beck Road, that, that is also part of Tradition, north of eighty-seven. And we also have south of eighty-seven, which is Oak Crest Elementary, right? And then four-five, Oak Crest is the same boundaries. And so that's probably the biggest change. We made a couple of minor adjustments to Pecan Valley. Sinclair's footprint got considerably smaller. And the board, you know, was very clear that with the continuing residential development in the area and the growing enrollment there, that we needed to create some space. And so we were able to achieve that as well. We also shared with the community that the board's desire in the long term is to begin to move towards a pre-K five model. We felt like Tradition being pre-K five and Oak Crest pre-K five initially gives us an opportunity to get the data that indicates it's having the impact we want. And the, the whole thing is driven by an, an interest in the board to, to reduce transitions. We're opening early childhood centers at all of our elementary schools, as you know. We'll be eliminating that pre-K transition for every child in our community from pre-K to K. And for those that go pre-K to five at Oak Crest and Tradition, they won't have a transition until junior high. And if it works out the way that the board thinks, we, we foresee being able to, over time, transition all of our elementary schools to a pre-K to five, where there would be two fewer transitions for every child. And so that, that was well-received. We did not get any negative feedback about that vision at any point throughout all areas of our community, so. And all campuses have room. They're very well-balanced if this were to be approved. And there's room for growth to accommodate what the demographer, at least in our last evaluation from a demographer, suggests. And based on our best projections with what we see on the ground in terms of residential development. Our fastest-growing area is north of eighty-seven and, and west, I-ten, sixteen oh four, fifteen eighteen. We know that. So Tradition's going to open with room for more than two hundred students to grow. This boundary change is going to give Sinclair nearly two hundred students in room for growth. And so we, we think that we've accomplished all of the goals the board had in that proposal, and again, the community felt that way as well. Be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Questions? All right, I think we're good.
All right. Trustees, I recommend board approval of the proposed attendance boundary changes effective twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the attendance boundary zone changes as presented. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
There was a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions? There being no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Consider and Take Possible Action Authorizing the Negotiation, to Negotiate the Purchase of Approximately Forty Acres and an Approximately Eighteen Thousand Square Foot Warehouse Located at Ninety-eight Fifteen South Loop, Sixteen Oh Four.
Trustees, as you're very well aware, the district has for many years leased a facility on W.W. White Road to meet our warehouse needs. It is the only situation where the district does not own a facility or property. That lease is set to expire at the end of this year, and there will be an option to sign back on for a multi-year lease. But that particular facility in recent years has not necessarily met our growing needs. One of the things that the district has aspired towards was to be able to also warehouse child nutrition, food products, which would allow us to improve our bulk purchases and get a better value on those. Most districts our size have the ability to do that. We do not. And so we've been trying to solve that problem for several years, most recently. We did come across a piece of property on sixteen oh four south of Sulfur Springs Road, just south of Sulfur Springs Road. And in your packet, on page one oh six and one oh seven, you'll see the, the plat. One oh seven's probably a little better, if you'll look at that with me for just a moment. You'll see Loop Sixteen Oh Four. You'll see the blue line delineating that forty-acre tract of land. You'll see that at least from an aerial view, it seems to be a really, really usable piece of property in its entirety. You'll also see an eighteen thousand square foot building. That is an unfinished building. It's never been occupied. It is outfitted to be a warehouse, and it's not finished out. And so there's the ability for us to finish that thing out in a way that would meet our needs. We did have architects and engineers take a look at it, along with staff, to see if it potentially could meet our needs and just to do a little preliminary exploration. And it does seem to have some potential. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Matt Morgan to come up and give us a little bit more information. I've touched on quite a few points, but Matt's going to give us the board a little more information about this. And what we'll be bringing to you to get tonight is, again, just authorizing myself to begin formal negotiations to consider the purchase. We're not authorizing the purchase this evening. We would be bringing that back to the board if it seemed to be something that is consistent with the board's wishes.
Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, board members. Mr. Toscano, thank you. You said quite a, quite a bit of information. This, this possible warehouse would allow us a lot more flexibility with our future growth. It's more centralized to the predictive demographic growth on our district and puts it a little bit, a little bit closer to the high school complex where we do most of our business out of the warehouse. It would allow us to consolidate our custodial supplies. Right now, we have those in two different locations because we've outgrown our, our current warehouse. The current warehouse, which we've been leasing since the early nineties, is not as tall, so we can't go vertical. The ceiling on this possible warehouse is double that, so it will allow vertical growth as well. And it's about four thousand square feet bigger than our current use. And so the, the other potential is land around the current warehouse. We're very limited on, on putting stuff that doesn't need to be housed in a controlled environment. Having the extra land would, would- Stuff that doesn't need to be housed in a controlled environment, having the extra land would would allow us to have freedom. To store stuff out of the public's view, but still be outside as well. So with that being said. Staff recommends the board authorize a superintendent or designate to negotiate a contract to purchase approximately forty acres. And approximately an eighteen thousand square foot warehouse, and if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
As far as some other uses for that property that we may consider in the future?
As as the student population grows, the transportation needs grow and so that being another alternative site to house some transportation needs. Like I mentioned earlier, to have custodial supplies consolidated and delivered in one place and distributed from one place. It allows the child nutrition department to have the capacity to not only to have dry goods purchased in bulk at a. At a savings, but also to add freezer capacity that's limited on the campus as well and distributed from there.
And the architect's opinion, that that unfinished facility as opposed to building one from the ground up. If I understood correctly, they believe there's some potential cost savings there for the district, given that the structure is already there, it just needs to be finished out, am I correct?
Right, and so it's it's configured similarly to what we currently have. The office space is what we want to look at reconfiguring a little bit, it's just in a stud form right now, stud framing. Electrical and plumbing have been roughed in, so we're not locked into that configuration. The architect did mention there's a potential for significant savings if we were going to go out and build a warehouse from the ground up. And so that's very appealing to the district as well.
So this is already got water, electricity, everything, or is it just roughed into the building?
It's roughed into the building, so that would give us the opportunity to go three-phase electricity instead of one phase. To add those freezers or other other uses and the plumbing is not connected, we would we would have to add a. Waste water or sewer, not sewer.
Septic.
Septic system and so that can meet our needs as well.
Where are we storing the custodial equipment now?
So most of it is located on our our W W White Warehouse, we have a smaller facility behind the police department. And so a delivery comes in, they have to go to the to the transportation department to get the forklift, drive it over, unload it. Hand put it into the building behind the police department and then distribute it from there.
And you you mentioned something about drag goods or something from a cafeteria department, something, you housing that, you would house that over there also?
We would have the potential to, right now it's all housed at the housed at the campus. When you have a facility to increase your buying power, your cost comes down.
And this building is on just an open lot? How how are we going to secure that from people vandalizing and breaking in?
So it currently just has a barbed wire perimeter fence, we would look at doing a six-foot security fence like we would we have at our current warehouse. And then adding security cameras and stuff like that.
Alarm system, all those things.
So it would just be just storing no personnel there at all?
Uh, no, we would have our warehouse personnel there, we currently have three staff members that are full-time. And possibly store some of the the warehouse vehicles in that property and remove them from our transportation department, which. Can get a little crowded with some of the vehicles that they house there.
Sir. It provides a significant number of options.
You want to talk a little bit about the kind of things that we typically warehouse?
At our current warehouse, we'll have items that are need to be conditioned, so instructional supplies, whether it be paint, markers, crayons. Our biggest item is copy paper. And again, we're limited on going vertical and so that takes up a lot of room. At the warehouse, we have custodial supplies, whether it be some of the chemicals that they use or mop buckets or their supplies. We also house deleted equipment, so as items become obsolete, they're stored there until we can. Salvage them. We also have some records there. That we are required to retain, but not able to destroy, I guess that's saying the same thing. Records that we don't use but are not able to destroy.
So we got a full forty acres, our potential?
Yes, sir, so they did, there is an option to consider six acres and the warehouse. And there is also an option to buy the entire forty acres. And so that it it you know, if the board were to approve. For myself to begin those negotiations, we would look at all the the terms of both options and and. Get feedback from the board along the way before bringing those considerations to the board for action.
Either way, that would give us more options down the road. We need more warehouse space or or transportation facility.
Yeah, so so in the past, there was a point in time where the state was attempting to force school district to go to buses. That were liquefied natural gas. You well know the issue with the fueling problems and our current bus garage is in residential community. It's not where you want to have things that go boom boom. So if the state were to move in that direction again, or if we were to decide that LNG was the way to go with our buses. This would give us the opportunity to build that facility from the ground up, get it away from residential communities. As I remember correct, if if I remember correctly, Jim, and you may need to help me here, there were two different fueling methods for. Those LNG type buses, one took three or four hours for each bus to refuel them and the second one was a quick refueling option. But it had a bigger boom associated with it. And neither one of those seemed to be what we would want to put in that residential community. But we also didn't have the option with which way we wanted to go with our existing facility because of room restrictions. So this gives us the opportunity to to really decide which one is better for us. If we were to have to move in that direction. So you know, from my perspective, six acres and forty acres, there's not much difference between that. You know, it's it's probably to our advantage to really look at those and let superintendent evaluate those. Two different options and come back with the best for us for the future and and for the present. What's the what's the ROI on purchasing this as opposed to continuing to lease our facility?
I'm not familiar with that term.
Return on investment. Dang, I got him. Not a school district acronym.
That wasn't a school acronym, man.
Given our current expenditure, Matt, and the cost of this facility, are we looking at a payback of fifteen years, twenty years?
Until we get a final sales price, it's a little bit difficult, currently we're renting the 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 current lease is fifty seven hundred dollars a month. With a three percent increase per year. So.
Okay, so we're looking at a decent return on investment with this.
Very decent ROI, Mr. Morgan.
And 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 some options, okay, great, thank you.
The existing metal building, is it are you pre-wired or and you said plumbed already, right?
Um, it's got, it's wired and plumbed and stud framing.
So it's.
But it's not hooked up.
So do we know it's up to code or are we going to have that inspected to make sure it's at code? So we don't have to go in there and rip everything out and redo it, I mean?
Right, so the this building has been standing for a few years and the construction permit had lapsed. So we got pricing on what it would take to get that permits reinstated and so we would engage with an architect. Have them redesign the office space to meet our needs and to make sure everything's up to code and meet the future needs, potential needs.
You know what kind of service it has right now coming into it, you know?
It's not hooked up, but it's on the front edge of sixteen oh four, so there's three-phase within a hundred feet.
Awesome, okay, anything else? All right.
Trustees, I recommend board authorize a superintendent or designate to negotiate a contract. To purchase approximately forty acres of land and an approximately eighteen hundred square foot warehouse. Located at ninety eight fifteen South Loop sixteen oh four, San Antonio, Texas, seven eight two six three.
Thank you, we have a recommendation from the superintendent to authorize negotiation on the purchase of a warehouse facility.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller, is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Berrientos, any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, all opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Item E, proposals for improvements to FM thirteen forty six and FM fifteen eighteen.
Trustees, also in your miscellaneous packet, you'll see this particular agenda item. It's the same one that's in your electronic packet, but that the hard copy does also include the proposals that we received. As you as you'll recall, with the impending building of Tradition Elementary, we did have Tech Dot do a traffic impact study. And as a result of that study, you're aware that we're required to make some improvements to thirteen forty six, fifteen eighteen. With your approval last month, we did. Take competitive sealed proposals to the market and we received ten proposals on January eleventh. And at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Selby share those with the board.
Yes, Mr. Tiscano, board members, the in your miscellaneous packet, you see the attached. Results of those proposals. What you do see is that the the low bid was from Corin Construction Company at a price of six hundred forty five thousand nine hundred ninety one. Dollars and thirty eight cents. And this was a competitive seal proposal and so in addition to. Price or or proposed price, we also evaluated each company's proposal based on relevant experience, project management. Fiscal, excuse me, financial strengths and their subcontractor and supplier support capability along with with price. As you know, in the past, sometimes those other qualities will cause us to go over the low bid and go to a higher. Proposed price because of what we feel is a better quality proposal. In this particular case, that didn't happen, the Corin does have a lot of experience dealing with road construction. In particular with county and and in more important here, state road construction. It's a rather large company in that area, has more bonding capacity than most of these other companies. Had a strong management team, it seemed to be part of that. So as a result of that, that's why Corin is being recommended to the board for recommendation for this proposal. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Jim, who did the engineering on the?
CDS Murray Services. They have, they have people that are actually have worked for Tech Dot before that do a lot of the road work.
So we're confident that that's going to meet?
Yes, sir, and and it had, it's already gone through Tech Dot.
Okay.
And has been approved. Part of what you have, I guess you had to do it that way, but we wanted to go through, we have it all approved by Tech Dot. The only thing, if you recall, there was a document y'all, I asked y'all to approve about a month ago, that was part of this. Proposal process or this procedure. And then the only thing left is for the contractor to fill out the form and provide insurance and then they'll give us the the permit. We asked what level of inspection they're going to do and they said it wouldn't be any more inspection they would do than any other project that was. Like a driveway permit type thing, so we aren't going to have to have a Tech Dot inspector there all the time like on some Tech Dot jobs. So we have looked at that, I feel confident based on the meetings we've had with Tech Dot, because we started these meetings with Tech Dot. Easily a year ago and it's a very slow process, as you may know, working with Tech Dot and and very methodical.
That's one word for it. What's the disruption to the traffic flow out there, the the period of time that we're going to be impacting that community with some? With some rather yucky traffic?
Well, the the if we can get everybody's bonding and insurance and all that ready and together and to us and. And we feel comfortable with that, we'll and if the board approves this, we'll sign a contract and get them going at the beginning of February. We're anticipating about a hundred and twenty day calendar day process. But they, part of the proposed requirements is for them to provide. Road. Coverage on that to provide safety for the community. There's should be somewhat limited impact in the sense that the majority of the really heavy work is going to be the addition to. Which what would right now be part of the right of way, where you could do the addition to the. Turn lanes, or excuse me, the exit and entrance ramps that you would have going into those deceleration and acceleration lanes, basically. There will be some disruption whenever they have to do some restriping out there. There'll be some work that will be inconvenient for a couple of the people that have property right there, because we're going to have to. Do some improvements to where their culverts are, we actually have to replace some of those because of the extension of the road. But all of that has been and and I've talked to most of those folks myself at different community meetings. And let them know it was coming and they seem to be okay with, of course, until it happens, we'll see. But but they're aware that that's coming. But there will be some inconveniences, there's no doubt.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's going to happen, it's just how long a period is that going to?
It it'll be a little bit sporadic as long as the weather doesn't interrupt it right in the middle of all the, you know, barricades and stuff going up.
And if a traffic light comes necessary, then we're responsible for that also?
No, sir.
We're not.
That was not part of this and the is not in the plans at all.
Yeah, the the traffic surveys that were done didn't indicate it, so if it happens, it's not our fault. So somebody else has got to take care of that, yeah, so it saved us about a quarter of a million dollars.
It's probably pretty easy.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Trustees, I recommend board approval for the Corin Construction Company to perform the proposed improvements to FM thirteen forty six. And FM fifteen eighteen in the amount of six hundred and forty five thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars and thirty eight cents.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the proposals for. Improvements to FM thirteen forty six and FM fifteen eighteen, chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Garza, we have a second by Mr. Feller. Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Yeah, we we can do it now, we're going to step back for a moment right now and we're going to go back to superintendent's reports for a construction update.
You didn't have to go back. Just want to make sure I don't put the taper one back up there. See, and I thought taper was a type of rodent in Central America, I was mistaken. All right, well, that's my cap stick, that won't help.
Two thousand sixteen? Oh, bond.
All right. As you know, last month, we started the updates for the board on the the construction program under the two thousand sixteen bond. We're going to just quickly go through where we're at with Tradition Elementary School. Just wanted to point out a little bit here that. The the contractor has divided this school up into four sections. The gym and and up to where it's just close to the administration area is called A. Administration over to here is B, where it says pre K one is C and back here two five is is area D. Whenever we looked at this last, uh, month, you could see it was very rainy and messy, it was difficult to even really good, great, very good pictures. This is A, B, in here, D, C hadn't even had, uh, had just been poured and no steel, and then D was in the back, uh, is the furthest along of all those areas. What you'll see now is that C does have steel going up. Uh, A has, uh, gotten the roof up, at least roof decking, and some of the actual roof has already been put in. You have the, uh, the exterior insulation waterproofing going in, or have been put in. The interior has already started to be finished out. Uh, you have a lot of your HVAC ductwork being hung, and you have, uh, internal framing, uh, your, your stud work going up as well, rough ends for electric and plumbing, and even your sprinkler, fire sprinkler system. The D area back here also has the roof, uh, on it, uh, exterior walls is complete, except for the metal wall panels, which are going up right now. Uh, you have the interior, you have the stud balls, uh, stud framing all up. Some of the, uh, actual drywall is put up on one side in areas that are, uh, uh, protected from the weather. Uh, you have, uh, the electric wiring being pulled, and it's much further along than all the other pro- parts of the project. Uh, as you know, there was concern because of some delays on the work, uh, because of some issues with weather and, and as well as with, uh, a concrete pour that was corrected, and we're moving forward after that. But wanted to kinda remind you some of the things we're doing to make sure, not only for this job, but also for the Performing Arts Center. What we're doing to try to help work with Guido to make sure that they're making, they're gonna make the date, uh, that we need those, uh, buildings completed by, which is basically this summer. Uh, we have, uh, certainly been, uh, working with, uh, LPA and the other design consultants to make sure that any requests for information that they submit, uh, referred to as RFIs, and any submittals, where they submit what they're actually gonna put in, to make sure they're putting in what was specified. All those are expedited so that they're returned to the contractor, so it doesn't interlo- interrupt any critical path in ordering, uh, supplies, equipment, or putting in items as designed. Uh, we've hired AGCM, uh, who is a, a company that specializes in quality assurance, to monitor work at both locations. They're visiting those sites, uh, uh, just about every day, uh, since, uh, the begin- the, the first part of December. Uh, we are, uh, having, uh, met with them, and we continue to meet with them to see where we're at, how they're doing, and what we need to do to continue to make sure that they're keeping up with the work. Our own staff visits the sites, uh, weekly, uh, uh, the, uh, design team, uh, consultants are out there on a regular basis, and at both locations, we've asked that not only the architect, but also engineers go out there on a, uh, more frequent basis than they normally would, and they're doing that. They, uh, we've, uh, uh, asked for a letter from Guido to make sure that they're giving us a, a clear idea of what they're doing to make up this time. We did get a letter from him, but I didn't feel, nor did Mr. Toscano feel comfortable with the, uh, the letter, 'cause it wasn't very clear. And so I've met with them myself and went through what the expectation is, uh, for how they're going to help us and help themselves monitor how well they're doing in meeting these dead- deadlines, and we're, what I've asked them to do is give us a very specific date. I have dates based on pay applications, but I want them to tell me, yeah, that really is the date they're gonna get it done by. And then planning backwards from that completion date, what are they doing to make sure they hit, uh, hit that completion date? Uh, what are the, uh, the benchmark events or the critical path items that they're gonna be able to identify for us so that we know they're making the, the, the progress they need to make to hit those completion dates? Uh, what critical path items do we need to make sure are approved, and so that they can be ordered in a timely manner, so they don't get to a point and have to wait for materials because they didn't order something in a timely manner? We're trying to, even though that's their job and that's means and methods. But those are things that we're asking them about and trying to make sure that they're doing. And, uh, they are in the pro- have gone through, and they've already done, uh, what they call a pull plan, which is where they actually go through, and on a periodic basis, when a new team of subcontractors are coming in, depending on what phase the, the building is in during construction, where they work with those subcontractors, and they have to tell, they have to s- commit to specific start and completion dates for key parts of their work that they're doing. And I was at, sat in on, on, uh, that meeting they had, the most frequent one they had out at the elementary school just this week. So we are continuing to monitor them and work with them, and make sure that, uh, we do whatever we can to ma- that they, uh, complete those buildings as, uh, as promised. At the high school, uh, looking at the Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts, uh, this was last month, this is this month. And you can see, one, the weather's a little different, uh, but they have put up a lot more steel. If you look at the, the back of the building, uh, if you look in the back of the building here, you'll notice that an awful lot of additional work has be done, has been done, not only in the exterior, but what's not shown is on the interior as well. You have roof decking already going up on the second floor. The second floor has had, uh, two pores already. Uh, they're at a point where they can't do any additional pouring on the second floor until the steel work up here is completed. Uh, we've, uh, met with them, and they've brought in additional steel workers to make sure that that part doesn't delay the rest of the job, because until that steel is completed, nothing else can be done over there in these areas in the front. Uh, the steel is completed in the back, and those are coming along. Uh, they've already done some work that, for, uh, hanging ductwork, uh, rough end plumbing and electric, and, uh, so they are moving along. But that, that project is one that we're watching, uh, very closely. Okay? Any questions on those two projects before I move on? All right, Salado, uh, one of the things I promised last month was that we've spent a little bit of time on the phasing, uh, yes, sir?
Jim, I do have a question. On the, on Tradition and the Performing Arts Center, are we including any fire marshal inspections or any of those things, uh, in that critical path to make sure that we don't get hung up with an inspection that's missed and stops work?
Yes, sir. In fact, what we've done, because of some issues like that have come up in the past, and will continue to come up occasionally, uh, is that we've been trying to be very proactive with Fire Marshal's Office, to be very upfront, very transparent, so that whenever they come in and do an inspection, they don't go, no, no, you, where's your sprinkler system? It's like, well, you, you reviewed the plans, you approved it, you didn't say we had to have the sprinkler system. So we've gone through, and anywhere we think that there is something that would be a potential problem like that, we've gone ahead and just sent, got ahold of the Fire Marshal's Office and said, you know, is this gonna be a problem? You approved the plans, but on other projects we're working with you on, you're saying we have to do this, but you didn't say you had, we had to do it on this project. So if we're gonna have to do it, I'd rather do it now before they get the thing built, it'll be cheaper and doesn't delay completion. So we are trying to anticipate that. Same way with the, uh, the, another one that will, often has hiccups in it is the fire alarm systems. Uh, for whatever reason, people don't get the, the permits on those like they should, or, or get the inspections done until the last minute. So all those are things that we're trying to anticipate and make sure that the contractor is also, 'cause they're the one responsible for that, but make sure that they're putting that in their critical path.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's a good question, though, and that's where we have had hiccups in the past. I was gonna spend a little bit of time at, on Salado's, uh, phasing program, um, and, um, and just before we do that, just real quick, um, this is, uh, what, uh, the north end of the, uh, of the, um, uh, addition at, at Salado looked like last month. Uh, this is what it looks like this month, it's, uh, at least drier. Uh, they've done some additional, uh, work with steel and some internal, uh, rough ends. But what's more important is that on the south addition, uh, to the gym area, last month, you didn't have a picture because all there was was a concrete slab, and it was so muddy over there. I'll be honest with you, I didn't wanna get real muddy. And so, uh, but this, they have added steel there, they, they've made a lot of progress towards that side of the pro- uh, project. Very quickly, uh, just looking at the phasing, uh, of the, of Salado. That's not going right. What do I gotta do? Backspace? That didn't work. Back arrow? Are you just trying to display that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Need an adjusting instrument, Jim. In the construction business, we call it a hammer.
Precussion therapy.
Precussion therapy.
There you go.
There you go. There you are. All right.
Told ass good kid, I like that.
I'm telling you. That was rough. All right. And of course, this doesn't show everything on the, on the plan. What, what this shows you is that there, there's, uh, really gonna be five phases to Salado's project. This area of the gym, uh, excuse me, this area where you have the additions to the gym on the north and the south, unfortunately, the south part's cut off. Technology isn't always my friend. Uh, and then you have renovations to what was the old band hall and dressing rooms. Those are all gonna be completed by the time, uh, uh, the summer is, is over. But once school is out, this, at the end of this year, in the summer, they're also going to do, uh, work on the roof and air conditioning the gym, and doing renovations to the gym, uh, to the cafeteria. They're going to, uh, extend additional seating capacity by taking out the old, uh, stage area in the gym, uh, and doing some, uh, additional work inside there, uh, uh, for new lighting and new HVAC ductwork. Uh, they're also going to do some, uh, work on building C, which you can see the very edge of it there. Uh, that's gonna be primarily going to do some, uh, new addition, uh, new additional, uh, HVACs, uh, equipment, and doing some minor, uh, work on the interior, new flooring and paint and so forth. That should all be completed by the time school's out. We'll also be moving all the furniture and things out of Wing A, because as soon as they're done with these, they will start renovating, gutting, and renovating Wing A. And that'll be Phase Three. Phase One is the additions, renovations over here. Phase Two is the summer work in the gym, cafeteria and C. And then Phase Three is gonna be re- complete renovation of A. Uh, Phase Four is going to be renovations of B and D. And then Phase Five is the following summer, in two thousand nineteen, there'll be some minor work done in these areas, uh, of administration and the library. So the whole idea is, is as we complete one area, we'll move kids, uh, out of, for example, Wing A, into either, uh, some other areas such as the new additions over here at the, uh, connected to the gym, or areas of classes that were created out of the old dressing rooms and fine arts building, or, uh, area. And then, uh, we'll still have portables there through the summer of two thousand and nineteen. As we complete A, we'll move kids out of B into A, or wherever they need to go, and same way with D, and till, and that would be, uh, at, during Christmas, we'll make that move of two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And then we'll complete these by the summer of two thousand nineteen, along with this work, and, praise the Lord, will be done in half. But that gives you a better feel for how we're gonna get, keep school going on while we're doing ma- a complete renovation and addition project at its campus. And it'll be someone along that line at every other campus we do, but it, uh, but that just gives you a feel for it. The other schools, I'll just show you a couple of pictures, a little bit of the differences. This was in December at Harmony, and you can see that there's a lot more, uh, uh, roof decking and, uh, already putting up, uh, uh, stud walls and stud, uh, supports at that, that k- school as well. That's a, uh, addition to the school. Pecan Valley, last month, they hadn't even poured, uh, ha- over half of the additional concrete there because of rain and other delays, and, and they've already got all the concrete poured, and they've already got steel up over there. They, they made up all the time that they had lost, and they're, they're caught up again. Uh, at the back of the gym, they were able to pour the concrete addition for the restrooms and motor labs, and they've already got steel going up there. At Sinclair, same type of thing. Last, last, uh, uh, December, you had just some steel going up. This, uh, January, you have not only the steel up, but all, uh, the steel is pretty well done, decking on the roofs, and, uh, uh, stud, uh, framework going up, rough ends and electric and plumbing. Uh, this is the other, this is the addition to the back of the gym at Sinclair. Uh, they poured that and have, uh, the steel up and some, uh, roof decking already up there. John Glenn, still on the planning stage, as well as ECDC. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you. Also, I would like to just say, is if you need a different type of information, or if you want it in a different format, please let Mr. Toscano know. This is to inform you, this isn't something for me, 'cause I think I know most of it, but, uh, but if you would like something different, please let us know, 'cause this is to help you be informed.
Any other questions? And again, if you feel like you need any additional information, then get with, uh, Mr. Toscano and let him know what it is you feel like you need. I think the critical path schedules on a couple of the projects will help us tremendously to monitor that stuff, and we'll be getting those from, from Guido. And Jim, we may need to buy you some rubber boots. No, sir. It was, it was a statement about your, your fear of the mud at Salado.
Big boots for a not-so-mas.
Presentation was exceptional. Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? If not, Chair'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. Uh, before we move to adjournment, Mr. Toscano, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Any other board member have anything else? No? All right. With that, Chair'll entertain a motion for adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Garza.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Feller. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. Have a pleasant evening.